Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk call, the roll of the members.
Counselor Coopero, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor. Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Counselor Zaneda.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Nine members present, two absent.
At this time, I would like to introduce or bring up to the podium our chief of the fire department, so that he can recognize some members of his department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I want to thank you once again for allowing us to appear before you this evening with a special presentation. Just preface the presentation by saying the daily work of our firefighters here in Chelsea is challenging, with this heavy populated urban environment that we work in. Firefighters respond daily to all types of hazards, emergency medical, technical rescue, hazardous materials, and all sorts of public safety, public service calls, and fires. The threat of fires in our densely built neighborhoods remains our greatest threat and our most dangerous work. Modern day fires are burning faster and hotter than they ever have before, due to the dangers of manmade materials and all of the contents of our homes today. We have less time to effect rescue, and people have less time to get out. Over the past two months, we've had five multiple alarm fires, which caused the displacement of nearly 100 occupants. One of these multiple alarm fires was at 3234 Cottage Street, which resulted in the special recognition we are here to present tonight. With that, I'd like to call up Captain Michael Gerska, firefighter Stephen Waxman, firefighter These men are being presented with department commendations, and it reads as follows. On August 17, 2022, at 00:22 hours, Box 134 was struck for a reported building fire at 3234 Cottage Street, with people possibly trapped. Upon arrival, first alarm companies faced heavy fire in the rear of the building, extending to all floors of a three-story wood flame duplex. It was immediately discovered that an occupant was trapped and climbing out of a front third-floor window. While several life-saving tactics were being deployed by first alarm companies simultaneously, firefighter Christian Avirgineta, Tower One driver, and firefighter Stephen Waxman, Car Three deputy chief aide, immediately deployed a 35-foot ground ladder with the assistance of bystanders. Firefighter Avirgineta communicated with the victim to ensure he did not jump. They were then assisted by Captain Michael Gerska, Latitude Officer, upon his arrival. Firefighter Avirgineta and Captain Gerska ascended the ladder, and as a unit, these three members affected the rescue of the trapped occupant, who was later treated for minor burn injuries. The fire went to five alarms and was brought under control and contained to the building of origin. For acting without hesitation, the proud tradition of the Chelsea Fire Department, and for assisting in the rescue of a trapped occupant under extreme fire conditions, firefighter Christian Avirgineta, firefighter Stephen Waxman, and Captain Michael Gerska are hereby presented and awarded this commendation in recognition of their efforts with the gratitude of the department and the residents of the City of Chelsea, issued on this third day of October 2022 before the Chelsea City Council, by order of myself, Leonard Albanese, Chief of Department. Congratulations. Again, I thank you for letting us come here and recognize these members in front of the council. We recognize good acts and good deeds all the time, and we do a lot of it locally, we do a lot of it in-house, because it's most important to get acknowledged by our brothers and sisters in the profession. But sometimes, when things go above and beyond, they deserve this type of recognition, and I thank you very much, and I thank these members for their work.
As is tradition, I will allow a few minutes for the... We'll allow councils to speak, and then we'll have a short break, so that family members can take some pictures here, as typical when we do the installations. But Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I know this is a great honor tonight, that we're here to recognize these heroes. We, as city council, we make these, all these policies and work all the policies, but it's always great to hear that the work of the men and women that put their lives on our... that put their lives on the shelf for others, that go into fires while fires are burning and engulfing houses and flames are coming out, and they put their lives in front to go in and protect others and pull them out. So I just personally wanted to say, thank you, men, for the work that you do. We always talk about public safety, and a lot of folks think it's just the streets and the cops, but it's the firemen. When there's a fire going out and someone wants to jump, maybe they hurt themselves, maybe they do more damage than good, but then when we have folks that can calm-headed talk to them and say, hey, we're here for you, we're gonna get you out of here. So I just want to thank you guys for the work you do, and again, appreciate all the hard work and what you do and your dedication. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Counselor Judy Garcia.
Very briefly, I will say, it has always been on my mind that the fire department and all of you are the bravest of the brave. It takes a lot of courage to go out there and fight those fires, but it takes even more courage to put your life at risk to save others. So to the three gentlemen that are being recognized today, thank you for the work that you do. I personally went to visit some of the families that were displaced, and I know how incredibly grateful they are that you saved their lives, and that you've given them the opportunity to live one more time. So thank you for doing that. I also want to recognize someone very special, Mr. Chris Avirgineta. I know that you are a brother of someone very special here for our council, but your parents. Your parents raised two incredible young men. I know there's actually three, but two of them are here in Chelsea, and they've devoted their lives to serve our community. One here at the podium, passing laws and policies, the other one saving lives and really fighting fires. So thank you for that.
Counselor De Jesus.
I'll be brief. I echo my fellow councilors' words. I am so grateful to have such an amazing team here in Chelsea, but as someone who recently... my family, you know, was also a victim of a fire that took everything, it's insane how, you know, we have such brave members in our community, that when everything is chaos and everything is, you know, out of control, you guys are ready and just prepared to go in and save lives and, you know... speaking to the victims of the Chelsea fire and this Cottage Street fire, I know that that family in particular, who you guys were able to maintain united by saving that young boy's life, they are eternally grateful for the work that you guys did that day. So thank you so much for your courage and for representing Chelsea, and just for being amazing firefighters in our community.
We'll take a brief recess, so that the members of the firefighters who were announced tonight and take pictures with their families. We'll take three minutes. We'll now go on and continue with our meeting. We have the memorials, we're still on memorials and celebratory resolutions. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have a continued public hearing scheduled to discuss proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Section 3421, 241, adding the definition of the electric vehicle collision repair. Is there anyone who wants to speak on the zoning amendment regarding the electric vehicle collision repair?
Good evening. You must have stayed as Mr. Bonjovan again, and you must be looking for trouble, otherwise you wouldn't be here, am I correct? 46 Galuley Road, Chelsea. Well, I'm here for two reasons today. One is, make sure that whatever you're gonna be vote, vote from your knowledge, and not from you're afraid of somebody else would say. Do not change the zoning for one person. Keep the way it is. Thank you for that one. Second, I'm here on a good note to my city manager. My city manager, who refused to have a game where we had bocce, and you know, you would have won, you wouldn't have seen me forever, but I want to say thank you. We had a wonderful Saturday. We had a... we didn't win the trophy, but we won something else. We won friendship. Friendship between the two cities that I think has gone beyond the bocce game, has gone beyond just talk about this and that, but it talks about relationship from ex-family that we had and everything, and, you know, and then people will complain, why did you take my mayor? I said, we really didn't take him, you guys just do not want it. We took him, it's good, we're gonna keep him, I hope. So for that in mind, Tom, I say thank you. We wish we would have more city councils come in and join us, and we look forward to next year, and wish me luck, maybe we will win the trophy back. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the public hearing to propose amendment for the zoning ordinance? Seeing now, none. That, we will now close the hearing on the zoning ordinance, Section 342-1. We'll now open our regular public speaking portion of our meeting. Any resident or attendee who wants to speak has four minutes to address city council. Please state your name and your address. You will have four minutes to address the city council on any matter. Seeing none, we'll now close that portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes of the last meeting.
We don't have any. We're not ready.
From October, no? Nope? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the communications from the city manager. We have a communication from the city manager, Tom Abrazina, with regards to the notice of residency. Want to wait?
Dear councils, I'm writing to notify you of my intention to grant a residency waiver to DPW employee John Betancourt, who recently moved from Chelsea to Lynn. Mr. Betancourt is a valued member of the department, and we wish to retain his services. In accordance with the Administrative Code, Part 4, Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments of this proposed waiver within seven days.
What is wish of the council?
Move to accept the filed communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted and filed. We have a next communication from the city manager regards to a transfer, request for transfer for fire vehicle acquisition.
Dear councils, I'm writing with a request to transfer surplus capital funds in the fire department to allow for the purchase of a new ladder truck. This request does not require any new funding. You may recall that, you may recall that last fiscal year, within the FY23 Capital Improvement Plan, the city council approved $1,500,000 from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of acquiring a new ladder truck. Unfortunately, the following completion of the procurement process, the purchase price for the truck is actually $1,700,870, leaving us with a shortfall of $200,870. We do not have sufficient funds for this shortfall, without need for any new appropriations. Specifically, we have surplus funds available in four different previous capital projects for fire vehicle acquisitions in the FY14, FY17, FY18, and FY20 Capital Improvement Plan. In each of these cases, the vehicle has been received and the purchase price paid in full. We also have a small balance available in the FY18 CIP Fire Department Mapping Project that is likewise completed. All that is required from the city council is a reallocation of these existing surplus funds, which total $198,128. Once all these funds are transferred, we will have a small remaining gap of $2,742, which we will cover with FY23 Fire Department Operating Funds. For the above reasons, I respectfully ask that the city council reallocate the $198,128 from these five capital projects to this new purpose. Drops of the necessary orders to accomplish these transfers are attached.
What is wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
That communication's been asked, do we accept it under suspension and file it? Seeing no objection, we'll continue. We have communications, petitions to the council, communications from the parking clerk, Jeanette Sutron White, regarding the Traffic and Parking Commission held on August 30.
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objection.
Seeing no objection, the communication from the August 30 meeting has been accepted. Our next communication...
Point of inquiry, Mr. President, we don't have to adopt that by a roll call vote?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
A simple objection to acceptance under suspension can call for roll call, but it's difficult. We have a next communication from John De Priest, Director of Permitting and Land Use, with regards to zoning amendments, visitor parking passes. Dear Council of Avirgineta, at the meeting of the Chelsea Planning Board held on Tuesday, June 28, 2022, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed zoning amendment to Section 34-106J of the zoning ordinance to allow those units not eligible to participate in the city's residence sticker parking program to be able to receive visitor parking passes. The board supported the amendment and voted unanimously, 6-0, with Jessica Beizer, yes, Harleen McLean, yes, Mimi Rakator, yes, Sarah Novell, yes, Sarah Ritchie, yes, Tuck Willis, yes, to recommend that the council approve the amendment as proposed, to read as follows. Section 24106-J6, "Any relief from off-street parking requirements in this zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program. Any relief from the off-street parking requirements in this zoning ordinance will still allow that location's residents to participate in the visitor parking pass program." John De Priest, what is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objection.
Do we also have a motion to send this to a public hearing?
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion and send it to a public hearing.
Counselor...
Under suspension if there are no objections.
Yep. Counselor Robinson asked that the... we held a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled city council meeting on the amendment for allowing parking passes, visitor parking passes, for buildings that have special permits. Next communication, we have a communication from the, John De Priest, in regards to permitting and land use for the results of the meeting held on September 27, 2022, public hearing on the zoning ordinance proposed by the city council, electronic vehicle collision repair. Dear Council of Avirgineta, at a meeting at the Chelsea Planning Board held on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed amendments to allow electric vehicle collision repair in the highway business district, the industrial zone, and shopping center districts, subject to the issuance of a public permit by the zoning board of appeals, and a major site plan review by the planning board. While the board supported the use, the members expressed a concern that the use is not consistent with the intent of the shopping center district, which is to allow for retail services, sales and services, and is concerned about the introduction of traffic into shopping areas where there are a number of pedestrians. The vote, the board voted 6 to 1, to recommend that the city council approve the first two amendments as-is, and to recommend that the council revise the third amendment to allow the use subject to a special permit in the highway business zone and industrial districts only, and to not allow it in any other zoning district as illustrated in the attached revised amendment. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted and filed. We have a...
Under unfinished business.
Under unfinished business, we have two amendments in front of us.
The vehicle, repair vehicle one.
Yes, so we have the amendment to amend the definition for the repair collision, and we have Amendment 1 to the construction expansion of electric repair facility will require a major site plan review, and Amendment 3, as proposed by the Chelsea Planning Board, to allow this solely in the business highway and industrial zone by special permit. So is there a motion to accept Amendment 1 and Amendment 3 by any member of the board?
What's the original order?
The original order would be to introduce electronic... Amendment 1 is to introduce the definitions of zoning board by placing in there electric vehicle collision repair, which currently is not, is not in our zoning definitions. So it is in the introduction of this new use, electric vehicle collision repair means structures or lots for the service of electric-powered vehicles, including tire-changing, wheel alignment, hardware replacement, windshield wiper fluid replacement, and such. That is the introduction of allowing this term in our zoning ordinance. Amendment number 2 would be to, to read, the construction expansion of vehicle repair will require a major site plan review. So anyone who goes in front of the zoning board seeking a special permit will still have to be required to have a major site plan review by the planning board. And Amendment number 3 would be to amend the original proposal that it would be allowed in the business highway, shopping center, and industrial, to only be allowed in the business highway and industrial as recommended by the planning board.
My understanding, based on what you said, thank you, Mr. President, is Amendment 3 is what is being recommended by the planning board?
That is correct. At the very top of that page with the list of amendments, you'll see, "Revised zoning amendments as proposed by the Chelsea Planning Board, September 27, 2020." You'll see that at the very top of this page, page 2 of 2. So that one is, these are their recommendations, and it was explained in the letter, that they approve the introduction of an electronic car repair service in the City of Chelsea, but recommend that it's only allowed in the industrial and in the highway districts.
Okay, and that's Amendment 3?
That's Amendment 3.
And what's before, what's before us on the table now is, we're taking up for a vote Amendment 1 and 2?
1, 2, and 3.
1 and 3. Okay, 1, 2, and 3.
So Amendment 1 would be the introduction of the term. Amendment 2 would be that it requires a major site review, and Amendment 3 would be the areas that they would be allowed in.
Okay. Can we choose 1 out of the 3?
No. You have, I mean, you wanna, you could, but then you won't be following the recommendations of the planning board.
Okay.
You'd want to at least adopt, number 1, because that's the introduction of electronic cars repair shops in the City of Chelsea. Number 2, you would suggest to do it so that any, anytime that someone comes with a special permit, it requires a major site review, greater review of the said application. And number 3 would be to follow what have been shown as the concerns of the residents, that it's not in the shopping center, and followed only in the industrial and highway districts.
Okay, so it's bundled all for one vote?
You, no, you can, you get a roll call on the amendments one by one.
One by one.
Counselor Vito.
The seven years I've been on the city council, I've never seen anything so confusing in my life. I also am a little... I don't remember us ever having a conversation about this in a subcommittee, so I'm a little perplexed as to why we'd be voting on something that we haven't even talked about. Secondly, I know it's been kind of normal business for the past couple of years to amend... amend zoning to accommodate specific projects, but I don't think that we should be setting a precedent to try to change, to change zoning simply because somebody wants to come into our city. So I have a lot of issues with this, I, it's all very messy. I've only heard about the Tesla and the electric vehicle repair from Mr. Bonjavani, who told me about it, that it was in, in the, at the zoning board, the planning board, but we haven't had adequate conversation about this, so I'm a little concerned as to why this is presented to us as if though these are our only options. So I'll be voting no unless somebody wants to have further discussion and actually talk about this, because at the end of the day, regardless of what the Planning Board says, we are the body that gets to decide what our zoning is. So, thank you.
We need a motion on the floor. Okay, motion to move this to a subcommittee.
Move it to the subcommittee?
On conference.
Under suspension, Counsel?
We have an order introduced by Counsel Brown regarding the Chelsea City reuse, I'm sorry, authorizing appropriation of five, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars from General Stabilization Fund for DBW Sewer Management. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion, have a roll call vote on it to second reading. Have a roll call vote on it tonight.
Counsel Brown asked that we have a roll call on the order introduced at the previous meeting for the appropriation, I'm sorry. He's on an order, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Fund. Clerk, call, roll.
The agenda is the one for the school department.
Five thirty-nine?
No, we're reading five hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
No, I know, but I'm saying we missed the one before that. On the agenda, A.
We'll get back to it.
All right, so can you, can you clarify, because I have to recuse myself if it is DPW water.
We're on the, we are in DBW Storm Water Management.
Okay, thank you. So can you just tell me what the order is going to be, because I don't know when I should be coming back, if we're going out of order?
We're doing a roll call on the Storm Water Management account. Five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, order introduced by Counsel Brown ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of five hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars from the General Stabilization Fund to the FY twenty-three DBW Sewer Department Storm Water Management Account to provide funding for discharge detection and elimination work in Mill Creek.
In the top right-hand corner, it should say thirteen H.
Yep, okay.
Okay, roll call. Yes.
We had this before us last meeting, again, this is a project that we have to do, it's a lot of money, spent some time with the city manager on this area that we're talking about, this money would go to do studying, water analysis, to find out what the quality is over there. As of right now, we're getting an F, which is a bad rating for us over there, we're trying to improve that area, and first and foremost, we have to find out what's going over there. It's really no benefits in spending this money, but it's something that we have to do to bring it up to par for the state. Thank you.
Clerk, call, roll.
Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in favor, two absent, one recused. Motion adopted.
Now, we'll go back to A, which was the under second readings, identified as ID two three F, introduced by Counsel Brown regarding the proof, approves an increase in the fiscal twenty-three-three School Department Original Appropriation from one hundred and eighteen million dollars, two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, six eight, six seventeen, to one hundred eighteen million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred thirty-four, and that increase of three hundred eighteen thousand dollars, seven hundred seventeen dollars. So we should have in the top to, for you to follow, it should say thirteen G is the top right number on the order we are voting on.
Motion?
Motion to adopt by Counsel Brown.
Okay, Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused, Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, no one opposed, two absent, one recused. Motion adopted.
We are now going on to Item C, order introduced by Counsel Brown that the city authorized the appropriation of ninety-one thousand dollars, one hundred fifty dollars from the General Stabilization Account Fund for the Housing Community Development Contract Services. It would state thirteen I in the top right-hand corner as the order. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt on the roll call vote, Mr. President.
Okay, you wanna go? Yeah, okay. Counsel Brown, move to a roll call.
By the way, if we can just reread the order, Counsel without?
Yes, Counsel, City Council authorized the appropriation of ninety-one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars from the General Stabilization Account Fund seventy-twenty to FY twenty-three Housing Community Development Contract Services Account zero one 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 eight zero five two five three zero six hundred, to provide funding for environmental oversight work on the industry redevelopment. Top right-hand corner is thirteen I.
Motion to adopt under suspension, roll call vote.
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote, clerk, call, roll.
Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have a next order introduced by Counsel Brown of the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Account Fund to the FY twenty-three Recreation and Cultural Affairs Division Youth Programs, to provide funding for the grant program for the youth athletic leagues.
Okay, it's under eleven D on the new agenda.
I've done the roll call vote, Mr. President, just briefly, because we all...
Thirteen J is top right-hand corner reference.
Yes, so this is the fifty thousand dollar grant that we all spoke on, highly on, it's the fifty thousand dollars that we set aside, made money available for youth programs that they can put into a form. We have a form here that you can put in a request to see if you can get some funding out. We're trying to do all we can to help and support our youth. This is our first big push, so it's an additional appropriation, and we hope that it'll go a long way. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a next order that is introduced by Counsel Brown regarding pursuant to section four, City Council approved the items forth in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated with Teamsters Local Twenty-five, oh, the roll call, I'm sorry, didn't call.
Yeah, we missed the roll call on the fifty thousand.
We're speeding right through this.
Okay, Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido? Counsel Vido? Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion adopted.
Okay. We have an order pursuant to section four dash three of the Chelsea Charter, that the City Council approves cost items set forth by the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between Teamsters Local Twenty-five for the DBW, memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for fiscal years twenty-three to twenty-five, dated September one, twenty twenty-two. What is the wish of the council? Counsel Brown asks for a roll call vote, he speaks, has a floor.
Thank you, as you know, this is money for the union, it's a three-year contract that was negotiated by the management team here, so we have to fulfill our obligation. It's about thirty employees, it's a three-year contract that will cover the salaries for the first three years, and hope everyone will vote in favor of, up for the unions today. Thank you.
Clerk, call, roll.
Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused, okay, Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, eight in favor, none opposed, two absent, one recused. Motion adopted.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Brown, section four, three dash one, the City Council approves the cost items set forth, I'm sorry, next one, that the fund of collective bargaining between the local twenty-five, Teamsters Local Five, for the DBW fiscal year twenty-three, the City Council authorizes the transfer of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the salary reserve account, one, zero one nine 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 five nine, fifty-nine, eight thousand, to FYW twenty-three DBW Streets and Sidewalks Regular Salaries.
Motion to adopt on the roll call vote is similar to the last one, but for the DPW ones.
Yep.
It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused, Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, one recused.
We have a next order on the agenda, we have an order introduced by Counsel Brown that the...
Mr. President, if we can do the next four orders, and because they've all been condensed in here, it's thirty-three thousand dollars, they're all orders that we look at and they just previously billed, occurred that needs to be paid.
So are you looking at item G, item H, item I, and item J?
Yes.
G, H, I, J.
Yeah, G, H, I, J, so, and the reference here would be thirteen K, thirteen L, thirteen M, and thirteen N will be all together as one.
Yeah, and if you just wanna read the figure, that'd be great.
Yep, we have...
The first one will be in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-four, section, one, one thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents from the Human Resources Department. The next one will be three thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents from Human Resources Department Health Reimbursement. The next one will be five hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents, Department of Public Works, Structure and Grounds, and the final one will be one thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, ninety-nine cents from Health and Human Services Veterans Department Expenditure Line.
Counsel Brown asks for a roll call on all four.
Okay.
Seeing no objection to the package by any counsel, we will vote on all four.
Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent, motion adopted. Now you have the final one.
We have thirteen Q, top right hand?
Right.
Which is a list in accordance to Massachusetts General Law six-four, budget procedures which were not paired, and the council authorized a grand total of thirty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred, ninety-one dollars, any one cents, for the number of small bills that were needed to be paid out. Counsel Brown, do you ask for a roll call vote?
Okay. Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent, motion is adopted. You now have before you the appointments of boards and commissions.
I will just read off the names in the board, for the sake of clarity. So the appointment to the Planning Board, Mr. Eric Sizner, sir, for the appointment to the Chelsea Scholarship Committee, Mr. J. Velez, for the appointment, reappointment to the Economic Board, Joseph Fuchs, for the appointment to the Development Board, Economic Development Board, Madeline Carfield, for the appointment to the Economic Development Board, Mr. Cody J. Collins Hernandez, for the reappointment to the Community Recreation Advisory Board, Dr. Alice Marullo, for the reappointment to the Chelsea Historical Commission, Mr. Alex Barks-Carsell, for the reappointment to, or rather, appointment to the Chelsea Historical Commission, Mr. Brian Matewix, and for the appointment to the Youth Commission, we have Ayanna Romero Sanchez, Tensei Halli, and for reappointment to Chelsea Tree Board, Mr. Nicholas Boatwright. What is the wish of the council?
I'd also like to acknowledge that one of Alex Barks-Carsell from the Chelsea Historical Commission is in the audience.
Should I roll call?
Roll call.
You're welcome.
Counsel Brown asked for a point of, trying to remember the point, point of preference, point of procedure of personal comfort, so Counsel Brown asked for a minute?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we will go continue with the meeting and have the roll call on the appointments of the boards.
Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor absent, Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avadanaeta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, the appointments are confirmed.
Appointments are confirmed. Congratulations to, and thank you to those who were named for your service. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, we have item ID two-three oh nine, order introduced by Counsel Vigeneda, that the City Council has the authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents in the city of Chelsea, that it therefore be ordained and revised the Code of Ordinances of the city of Chelsea, and that the chapter fourteen, article one, license permits and Massachusetts Business Regulation General be added to section eight as follows, "The proximity of ice cream trucks to schools that no ice cream vendor permitted under Massachusetts Law two-seventy, section twenty-five, shall engage in the ice cream truck vending within five hundred feet of a public or private school, providing education and kindergarten in any grades one through twelve." What is the wish of the council?
Subcommittee on Conference, under suspension?
Motion to move this to a subcommittee on Conference. Motion to move this to a subcommittee on conference.
Okay.
We have new business, an order introduced by Counselor De Jesus, that the traffic, sorry, Traffic and Parking Commission looking putting a speed bump at Clinton Street intersection that connects with Crescent Ave. Counselor De Jesus?
Yes, I wish to accept and file of no objections, and I'd like to speak on the matter.
You have the floor, ma'am.
So I spoke a little bit about this last session, and that is the speeding, increased speeding that we're seeing on Clinton Street and on Crescent Ave. And, you know, I have constituents who have shared with me reports from the multiple car accidents that have happened on the streets. And, you know, Crescent Ave is a very long street that includes one of the largest playgrounds in our community that many children walk to from all around the city. And so I just hope that we can vote in favor of placing speed bumps on both of these streets for the safety of the children, but also the families that live around this area. Thank you.
Counselor Vito?
I'm not against adding speed bumps. I just feel that with the increased vehicular traffic that we have in the city, a lot of people try to cut through the city. There's a lot of speeding everywhere. I feel like I'm constantly getting calls from people from every corner of the city wanting speed bumps. I don't know how much it makes sense to piecework this and do it as, as these calls are coming in, or if there's any sense in maybe sitting down and figuring out what are some of the trouble areas in the city and talking a much broader conversation. Because the speeding is becoming a huge issue in our community. We can't expect that we keep building, people are going to come in here, and that is not going to increase traffic. And then everybody's just in a rush to get out of the city. It's taken two to three times longer than it ever did. So the, the streets in the middle, as they're trying to get around, are where they're really speeding, and that's unfortunately where most of our neighborhoods are. So I'm not necessarily trying to change anything, but just maybe planting a seed that this might be part of a much larger conversation. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor De Jesus, you cannot speak on the motion. You can make an amendment or do something of that nature. What would you like to do? I would like to amend my request for a subcommittee to discuss the larger concerns.
You can send it to Traffic.
Yes, I would like to send it to Traffic.
Well, it's going to Traffic anyways. It's Traffic and Commission, so it's going to the Traffic Commission.
Can we send this to a subcommittee on conference to have the broader conversations? Because it sounds like my sister colleague is in agreement that this should be a bigger conversation?
Yep.
Yeah?
Motion to, motion to send to a subcommittee on conference.
Okay.
On the motion, Counselor Robinson.
I did submit a request to the city manager to get a list of all the speed bumps that they were planning to put around the city that has not come back to this council yet. But I did make that request so we all would know where they're planning to put these speed bumps. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Brown?
I just wanted us to be aware of it. I'm glad this is going to a subcommittee, because again, before this council had took a no favor in speed bumps because it took up parking and it alluded other issues. But now there's a lot, speed bumps are starting to spur up in our community, and we got to be careful what we're doing. Next thing you know, it's going to be exactly what Counselor De Jesus said, I mean, Counselor DeVoe said, Demoli, is that we're going to have this people trying to get through our communities quick, and these accidents that we're trying to prevent will occur because people are not watching out. They're just trying to get through our community and go over these speed bumps. So I'd like to also have a account of those potential places, as Counselor Robinson said, where these speed bumps will be in place. So we'll have an idea that it's just not Crescent, it's just not Washington Ave, but it's this and this, and have an idea of what's going on. Thank you.
The next communication, or rather, the next introduction of an order, we have a request by Counselor De Jesus that the commission look into putting a speed bump to the corner of Clinton Street in Washburn.
Yes, I, I wish to join this. Move this also to the subcommittee, similar to the previous order, sent to Traffic and Commission.
This communication to be sent to the Traffic Commission, also a subcommittee on Conference.
She want a conference?
Conference.
She wants the conference?
It's a conference.
With the council?
That's correct.
Okay.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Brown, transferring proceeds of borrowing that are no longer needed to complete the project for which they originally were borrowed to pay costs of alternative capital project as authorized by Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, ordered that in accordance to check, chapter forty-four, twenty, sum of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, representing the unexpended portion of six hundred thousand dollars in the two thousand and fourteen capital improvement plan for fire vehicle acquisition, be used to transfer to the amount, the same amount for FY twenty-three Tower Letter Account five-four-zero-two-three-two-three-dash-five-eight-four-zero-zero-zero.
Make a motion to move it to a second reading.
Motion to a second reading. Seeing no, no objection. We now have an order asking for the transfer of the funds of the unexpended one point three million dollars from two thousand and seventeen CIP for the Truck General Obligation Board. The amount of the transfer is one hundred and one thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-one dollars for acquisition, the account to Tower Letter one, five-four-zero-two-three-two-three, five-eight-four-zero-zero-zero. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Brown asked that we move to a second reading. We now have an additional order by Counselor Brown, again, a transfer of unexpended portion of the seven hundred thousand dollars from CIP two thousand and eighteen in the amount of fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for the fire acquisition and transferred to the account five-four-zero-two-three-two-three, five-eight-four-zero-zero-zero. Wish of the council?
Make a motion also to move this also to a second reading.
Second reading. We have an order, order by Counselor Brown for the unused funds to be transferred in a sum of six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to be transferred over to the fire acquisition fiscal ladder two thousand and twenty-three. Again, account five-five-four-zero-two-three-two-three, five-eight-four-zero-zero-zero.
Also make a motion to move this to a second reading also.
Motion gets seconded, moved to a second order, second reading, rather.
Got one more.
Yep. We have an order in accordance to forty-four, section twenty, from the transfer of an unused portion of the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for FY twenty-eighteen Capital Improvement Plan for FireCAD System, and that that balance of four thousand dollars is hereby transferred to the file, the fire vehicle acquisition account for twenty-three Tower Letter one, account five-five-four-zero-two-three-two-three, five-eight-four-zero-zero-zero.
Make a motion, Mr. President, move this to a second reading.
That motion is carried to a next reading, second reading. That concludes what the items on the agenda. We're now moving on to public announcements. Any public announcements? Counselor Vito?
Thank you. Last week I mentioned about a new youth center here on Broadway. I actually got an opportunity to visit it. I'll encourage all my city councilors to check it out. I believe it's funded by the Department of Mental Health. It's a youth center for young people ages sixteen to twenty-one. They have showers, they have washer machines, they have TVs and recliners and meditation rooms. It's really cool. It's in Chelsea, and it's just a safe space for our young people to go. While it's not the youth center that we all hoped for it to start, and we really should start building bridges when it comes to coming together to work for our young people. So that's something that's in the community. I encourage people to go. If anyone's interested in getting more information, feel free to reach out, and I'll connect it to the person in charge. Thank you.
I have an announcement. House Bill four-seven-eight-nine, which was the creation of linkage fees for development that was earlier introduced, a home rule petition, which would be setting up rates for any large developments in the city of Chelsea, is currently sitting on the governor's desk and will be signed based on conversations with our state delegation either today or tomorrow, if it hasn't already been. In speaking with the city manager, it means that it is now up to the city council to work with the city manager to adopt the ordinance locally, at which with a rate of which developers will be charged per the size of the development. For example, the Flo Rambles project, although it did not qualify because it'd been filed pre, by, before the project was done, has, is giving nearly five million dollars if this rate was done. And so that's going to be something that this council is going to be working on, and that money is going to be working for workforce training, youth sports, commitment, community services, public works projects, and open space. But the announcement portion is not that, that it's coming down the road, but that even though this is something that I'd worked on, I will not be here to get it over the line. This is my last city council meeting. And I appreciate that my family was here tonight, that my brother received an award and recognition, but it's something that I knew was coming. I say that because, quite frankly, I've just been overwhelmed with the number of responsibilities that I have been taking on, both as a business owner and also taking care of presidency, not just presidency, but, but just it's, I know that I can't keep up, basically, honestly. And so it's the only part of my life that I can cut out right now. But I'm happy with the decision, and I think we did a lot of work. I say we, I know I proposed a lot of stuff. I'm happy with the history here of twenty-five years, the CPA, increase in residential tax exemption, plenty of zoning changes, wage theft, NIP ban, I'm reading all the things that, you know, that we did, the snow fence on the bridge, you know, keeping the Fifth Street Arm Ramp open, having the bus, senior bus program, and even just putting simple things like flags in the square or signs in different squares to show Chelsea what the names of our squares are. So, but it's just, I want to say that I know that all of us have private lives, we do the best we can, but sometimes that just takes a, a priority. So with that, that means that Counselor Brown will now be the president, and that also means that this council is going to have to replace me and fill this void. I know from the discussions with our city clerk, the, the other candidate that had run for office did not garner enough votes, so basically to the public, I say that, I imagine that this council will start be taking applications for this position to fill it because it's, it is a decent amount of time, too long, I think. But again, I'll leave it up to my colleagues, it's now your court, to decide whether or not you fill the position until for the unfulfilled year of nearly fourteen months. So I know that some family members are shocked, I know this is news to you, but it's a long time coming, and I think you know why, and I want to thank them, and I want to thank the voters. I'm separately, I have already recorded something which I'll be posting later on because I didn't want to talk too much about the, my appreciation, and I know I was going to get too emotional to the voters and all of the great employees of City Hall. So, yeah.
I want to take a moment during these morning announcements, well, not morning announcements, but evening announcements that are obviously very sad. I will say that because it's been an honor to serve here. As, as a councilwoman, I've been here since I started at twenty-three years old, and you were the only president who gave me an opportunity to lead some of the most important positions in this body, in this government. Most recently, I made history, winning the Democratic nomination for State Representative, and that happened thanks to you, thanks to your support. And I think it's, it's important to really recognize leaders like you who have paved the way for a little girl like me who came to this country, well, I was born in this country, but my mother came to this country with the hope of reaching the American dream, and you allowed a little girl like me to dream, but also to accomplish. It's been an honor to walk the streets with you, to observe the voters who believed in you, give me an opportunity because they know the kind of person that you are, the kinds of leader that you are. And I want to, I've said it and alluded to, to your parents before, you have done a remarkable, remarkable job raising three children who are an example for this community, one at the podium, the other one traveling the world, and another one fighting big fires. So it's important to recognize you, but above all, Roy, thank you for teaching us and being the captain of this ship for many, many years. I've been here for, for seven. You've been a captain for many of those years. We've passed amazing legislation, leading the way in the state, doing that, and the most remarkable action you've done in the past months has been inspiring twenty-two youth activists, teaching them every single day what it means to be a leader, teaching them how, how to lead, what activism is about, what local politics should be about. And you're making a very selfless decision today. You're taking a step back, and I say selfless because it takes a real leader, someone like you that has over twenty years of experience, to recognize when you need to take a step back and, and put your city first. And you've always put this community first, you've always put voters first, and that makes you a remarkable individual. So even though this is bittersweet news, we're going to miss you, it's going to be, we're going to have big shoes to fill. I thank you on behalf of my sisters in service. I know that this is a shock, but I thank you. I thank you on behalf of this community. Thank you for the work that you do, and we look forward to continue working with you and, and continue to make history, maybe in other ways, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
So, me and you, we go way back. I think my first, I know, my first run for office was against this guy named Roy Avila Geneta, who I knew nothing about. I knew his dad from the restaurant, but, from the bakery, but I did not know you. And, you know, we had some early battles and some early confrontations where we just butted heads together. You know, I think it had something to be with me being a former fighter and you with someone that was willing to win at all costs. And it just, you know, we just kept running into each other, running into each other, running into each other. But throughout the years, not only have I grown to have a great respect for your integrity, your workmanship, your willingness and dedication to serve and give, and your family to stand behind you and support you and, and watch you take on me at times and jump in the ring. His dad jumped in the ring and challenged me, but it's all been good. It's all been good. Folks have always stated, like, you know, you guys used to have all these fights and didn't like each other because we were running against each other for the same exact seat where it was the District Seven, which was the first seat, then the council at large. But I'm not going to bore anyone. I want to just say, you know, it's been an honor working with you and beside you. I remember when you came to me and you told me about the CPA, and I told you I work at the Secretary of State's office, and this is a new program that's going on. You've always led with it, with diligently attitude and passion, and I said, you know, I'm with you, I can support you, but there's certain things I just couldn't do. But throughout the last few years, we have worked terrific together, and we've worked tired... the last few years, we have worked terrific together, and we've worked tirelessly in the sense of bringing this city together with a lot of the younger colleagues, a lot of the new females that was coming on. You know, no one wanted to see us get together. Everywhere I go, they say, geez, you guys are like really a pea in a pot now. What's going on? It's, we took self out of our politics, and we put the city before. We've met a lot of friends. We've done a lot of work. You've taken a lot of leads on the work. Other city councils, you know, there's always been attitudes, but we've always worked behind the scene to try to keep this council together. And I really truly appreciate your leadership. I appreciate the work and the dedication, and I wish you nothing but the blessings of whatever your desires are, that they may fulfill your heart like your job on this city council did for the last year that you've been a council member. Congratulations. All the best to whatever you decide to do.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
I'm a little shocked and a little surprised that you would take this time to step back, but I understand priorities. You've been a good leader here for the city. You stepped up and introduced a lot of legislation that has benefited the city. The program that you have brought forth in regards to the linkage that you and I have talked about for years, I think it's a major thing, and it's one of the things that we're going to be able to address, some of the youth initiatives that you and I have talked about in the past. And it was a joy, you know, working with you and being by your side on a lot of the issues that we talked about. And you will be missed. I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Go easy.
Yeah, I will because, yo mío, I can't believe this is really happening. So I'm also shocked and in awe with this decision. You know, Roy, you have a very special place in my heart. For many of you that don't know, Roy, on a personal level, has been sort of kind of like a father figure in a way. And that's the truth, you know? So, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work side by side with you, you know, as a tremendous mentor that you have been to me and coach. I remember when I told you that I was gonna do this. I asked you, you know, can you support me? And I think I was in funny cafe every day after that. If I had any questions, anything, I can call you at whatever time of day. And that is just the type of commitment this man has on a one-to-one level with people that, you know, in his community and that he truly loves. Like, he loves hard. And in all honesty, it's really sad to see you go. Te quiero mucho, de verdad. You guys are amazing. You guys have done an amazing job with this man. I love you, and I wish you the best. I'll throw a lahorita for this, but it's okay.
Thank you. I would re-remiss, again, 25 years here. And again, I've said a lot of things, but I just want to say, I beat you, Paul. I got out of here before you did. And this man has been incredible, truly has. You know, just to know your way up here and be able to get things done. Straight shooter, no biases. And that's, you know, really hard to do with so many different characters up here and personalities up here. So you've been really unbelievable to me. You know, especially these last couple of years with everything that we've gone through, tough times. But you've been great to this office. You know, you and I both love history. When we talk about, you know, legislation and we pull out, you know, everything, everyone thinks it's all a new idea, and we know by me and I, no, it's the same thing, just a different name, you know? And, but you've been great, and have been wonderful the last couple of years, and even before that, even when I was just a young one who didn't know anything. But I wanted to thank you personally. So, as I said, again, I had my own personal speech, because I'm just going to try to stay very calm up here. But I always ended it with, you know, I'll just, I'll always have time for a coffee with a friend. So, thank you. Sorry, can't, oh, moment of silence, yes, we have to have, again, if anyone has a moment of silence for any of our friends who are no longer with us, if you have a name, Counselor Brown?
I just want to give a moment of silence for dear colleague in a neighboring city, George Retondo, lost his life, and also a friend, true friend, good friend, who's in the audience tonight. His dad has went on to glory. Prayers and thoughts are with the family. And, you know, sometime, you know, we get those folks to lead us, and we walk behind them, and we're guided by their footsteps, and they move on to glory where we hope that we will remiss with them in days. And, you know, the Bible tells us that, you know, every season has a time, every place is an opportunity. And I say that because, you know, we've lost a lot of folks in the last few years. And as we get older and we do these tedious things in life, you know, we have to remind those folks that went on before us. So my thoughts and prayers are with Mike Albano and his family, and also former city councillor at large in the city of Revere, Mr. Retondo, who's no stranger to the city of Chelsea, a person that was a strong voice in the community that was right next door to us. So we encountered him. I encountered him a lot, spent time with him at different council meetings. And it's, it's only right to recognize those folks and their family members as they go on and just, you know, thank God for life. So, but my prayers, my thoughts are with those two families.
Please stand for a moment of silence.